Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the second combined session with the Planning Board and the Council to discuss adult-use cannabis. I think Robert's going to really lead the discussion and give a little background and where we've been since we last met and kind of go over the draft ordinance that we have and next steps. So I'll turn it over to Robert.
All right. Hi, everybody. Robert Grant, I'm the Code Enforcement Officer for Ellsworth. I think everybody in the room knows the history, but for those that may be watching on TV, last November, voters in the city of Ellsworth approved our recreational adult-use cannabis retail locations to operate within the city. And so we've been having a series of workshops and joint meetings to figure out the particulars of how, where, why, all that stuff. We'd like to operate these locations in the city of Ellsworth. The last meeting we had was a listening session between our City Council, our Planning Board, and we had representatives from the main Office of Cannabis Policy that answered questions, and we also had people that operate retail adult-use recreational cannabis locations in other municipalities come in and tell us what works, what doesn't, that sort of thing. And we took those recommendations and turned it into the draft ordinance that everybody should have in front of them. On our Teams meeting, we have Scott here. He's the author of the draft ordinance, and he's here to talk us through it and answer any questions, give us feedback, and make any adjustments for the final draft.
Are there any questions before we jump into kind of the review of the draft?
Could you identify for the record more than Scott?
Oh, is it Scott Lever or Lever?
Lever, yeah, Lever.
All right, thank you.
And he's an attorney with Redmond Witch.
Thank you. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, so I think, Scott, if you don't mind kind of walking us through, everyone should have, everyone on the Council and the Planning Board has a copy of this in front of them. I don't know if you want to share your screen, but we can go off safer.
Yeah, no, I think I can kind of just walk you guys through it with what you have in front of you. I mean, I'll just go article to article, and if anybody has any questions, just raise a hand or throw them out. You know, the first section, general provisions, that just lays the groundwork, makes sure that it's stretched orderly where we're where we need to be as far as this ordinance being effective in time to the state statutes. And then you've got a number of definitions, most of which are pulled directly from the adult-use statute, the main, or the, yeah, main cannabis legalization act. And then if you go to Article 3, that's just saying we're going to allow these. And then prohibited activities, Article 4, is basically saying you can't operate one of these things until you've gotten all your approvals, whether it's through the Planning Board, the Council, and the state. You cannot operate unless you have received all of the licenses, which reference back to the definitions. And then this one, we could move around if we wanted, Number 3 in Article 4, but I just wanted to make sure that that was in here, which basically is the state's buffer zone for these is set at 1,000 feet from a public or private existing school, a pre-existing private school. But in my conversations with Robert, he had expressed the desire that you guys wanted to be a little more strict than that, or a little less strict than that, I guess, so 500 feet buffer, but also include some other sensitive uses, so.
Scott, can I, I have a question, Scott?
Yeah.
So are you saying this 500 feet is less strict than the state minimums?
It's less strict, correct? Because, I mean, because it's a buffer zone, so a buffer zone says if it's within, actually, no, the state minimum is 500.
Okay.
I take that back. Some towns have elected to go beyond that to say, okay, we want 1,000, or we want more. No, that's a great question, actually, and you're right. So 500 is the baseline. That's what the state says. That's where you can be.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I guess the one comment I would have about that is this is just kind of some stock language from other ordinances that I've looked at as far as these other sensitive uses, whether it's athletic fields, or public parks, or playgrounds. You know, some folks have places of worship that they include. I guess that's one area of this draft that if you guys have a specific sensitive use definition in the other ordinances, or if you have specific uses that you want to make sure you're buffered from, then that's something that we can adjust in that section.
Can I miss? Scott, one more thing, this is Robert.
Yep.
I believe that you can't, you have to have a 1,000-foot setback for any designated drug-free zone. I don't know if you're, so, I've seen that language, I don't believe you can bump it down to 500.
I'd have to go, I'd have to look back at that.
Okay.
I'll think in order to that and take a look to make sure.
As far as I know, we have four of them in Ellsworth.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know. Yeah, we want to make sure that, well, I mean, part of this is, will be the zoning and where you want it zoned, and then part of it will be those sensitive uses and how far you want them from each sensitive use, so we'll make sure that that all jives with what you guys have been going on logistically in the city.
Thank you.
Was there any consideration for church as a sensitive use? I don't see it there.
Yeah, I think what Scott said was that this was kind of borderline language, and we can adjutant these.
We could add that, yeah.
And it was in my original, on the map that I created.
Right.
I had created for the previous meeting, churches were shown in that setback, so we can definitely add that if that was something that everybody thought was appropriate.
Yeah, that's kind of what I mean about the zoning. I mean, if you guys have an area where you want these facilities to be located, then you kind of can overlay it on the GIS map and see, you know, okay, if we say it's X amount of feet from all of these different things, then you can kind of see what is left for developable properties. Number 4 on that one is social clubs. That's like if you went and purchased and then actually consumed on-premise, most municipalities in the state explicitly prohibit them, even though they are prohibited on the state level also, but there's regularly talk in the legislature about allowing those, so folks usually want to have that in just in case they do get allowed and you aren't able to change the ordinance before the statutes actually take effect.
That's not clear to me, if I may. It is, if a person wants to, or persons want to bring cannabis into a social garden, is that prohibited, or is it just that the social clubs cannot sell, distribute, et cetera?
So basically, social club is a term, and maybe we should define it to, it must be defined, actually. Yeah, but it's basically like a lounge, like if you were going to go to a bar and have a beer, like you'd go to a cannabis store and purchase a joint, and you could sit and smoke it inside the facility. So it's less about taking cannabis you procured from somewhere else and bringing it, it's more about whether or not you want to allow for onsite consumption.
Wow, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, does. Thank you.
Okay, okay, all right.
Can we just, sorry to pause again, but do we want to wait to the end to see if there's any additions we want? And Number 3, do we want to go through, or do we want to think of, are there any additions other than church, possibly, that we would like to be included in the buffer zones?
I think places of worship makes sense, and I think.
How does that compare to restrictions on how close you can have an alcoholic license? Is there, if you have a package board, do you have to be 500 feet from a church?
I don't believe so. I mean, we could if we wanted to as the town. I mean, we don't have to put in places of worship, but I think it's worth a.
I think the question is, what are our rules now for bars and restaurants of that sort? And does this line up with those?
You guys are the Planning Board, you tell me.
We're supposed to tell us.
We used to have a lawyer on our board that was useful, but not anymore. We got one, but he's not useful. Oh, he walked right into that.
If you're not restricting bars from being within 500 feet of a church, why are you restricting the marijuana business from being within 500 feet? I think we should more mirror the same restrictions that you have from bars.
Do we have what our ordinance is for that, what our rules are for that somewhere? So we can make it consistent?
We can certainly do that. I don't know what.
You don't have a memorization?
Not on top of my head, no. But we could certainly, we're about to do an ordinance rewrite anyway, so we could definitely make it all the same thing.
And I guess under Number 3, too, what is a recreational facilities properties? Where are you? You're restricted, it's got to be 500 feet from daycare facilities, licensed daycare, parks, playgrounds, or recreational facilities properties.
Oh.
What is?
And sorry, Scott, if you can mute yourself when you're not speaking, we're getting like a real wicked feedback, so, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, I would say, you know, that's one of those things that I can work with Robert and just make sure that it mirrors what you guys have for sensitive uses with these other types of establishments. I just put a laundry list of stuff in here just so that you guys get the gist of what we're trying to accomplish there.
What happens if one of these, you know, let's say you have a facility, and you had your 500-foot radius around it, or whatever it might be, and it's all clear, what happens if one of those other uses, like a church, or a school, or whatever, moves into the 500-foot radius? Does that, is it just, that's their tough luck?
It'd be a grandfathered use.
What's that?
It'd be a grandfathered use.
Okay.
Nonconforming use.
And would that be an issue or anything when they came up for relicensing?
No, I think the law allows it, but if they allowed the license to lapse, then I would say then that property would be prohibited.
Okay.
Right. For the person that's in there just renewing, it would be fine, but if they tried to sell it, or it changed hands, or there was a new license that came in, then it would be an issue. Also.
Also, under Number 3, Scott, it ends up with, in accordance with the distance rules listed in this ordinance. I looked through it, I didn't see it, but maybe Sarah, I just didn't see it, but what are the distance rules? I think generally it's, you know, you measure 500 feet from the property line, but is that specifically listed some here in the ordinance?
I don't think so.
Does it mean there's a big difference if you measured from, like, say, a school?
Not in this ordinance. I assume that there was a measuring rule, that's really what that's in reference to, that's in your zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but that's a different ordinance, right?
Right, but it's a zoning ordinance, maybe we just need to include which chapter that is.
Or make sure there is a measuring rule.
Well, there's a measuring rule in the state statute for this specifically. It's 500 feet from the property lines, yeah.
I think just clarify that.
Yeah, just out of the state statute, we don't have a particular ordinance for measuring, it's not even, than I'm aware of, but it's in the state statute.
Anybody here against, anybody here against John's position to match it with the other items?
Without seeing it, it's hard to know to match. It's good, because I don't know what it is. And since all the ordinances are going to be coming up for a rewrite to make sure they're consistent with what we want now, it's kind of tough to guess that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the only real risk is if you zoned out every area in the city, right? But that shouldn't be the case, since you have other types of establishments that have been able to get through site line.
This has been alluded to in various ways in this conversation around Number 3, but why wouldn't we simply use the same regulations, assuming they're in accordance with the state requirements, that we use for alcohol? I mean, why should they be different?
I pulled up the alcohol ordinance. Applications for license to sell or serve alcohol may be denied if the proposed use is within 300 feet of a public or private school, school dormitory, chapel, or parish house, provided the exemptions within Title 28-A. Proximity to schools do not apply. The distance must be measured from the main entrance of the premise to the main entrance of the school, school dormitory, church, chapel, or parish house.
So it's 300 feet to start, and then there's other stuff?
It's 300 feet door-to-door, it's not even property line. They did want to make that the same for recreational cannabis, but it didn't pass through legislature, so it's still, the state minimum for it is 500, property line to property line. But they were trying to make it the exact same, but it didn't pass the state.
Why don't we just mirror what it says in the state regulation?
With an amendment for the number of feet that's required by the state for cannabis?
Well, I mean, doesn't the state restrict it within 500 feet of certain?
Yes, but it's, yeah, but it's, we, so that would be up to.
But we're adding place of worship, which the state doesn't have, and that's.
They do have it for alcohol, though.
We have it for alcohol, yeah.
Yes, we have it.
So it sounds like the, ours needs to be updated to maybe 500 to.
Well, I don't know, no, I don't know if the state has that for alcohol. I don't know what the state statute is for.
So I think we need to confirm that our alcohol provision is consistent with state minimums. If that's the case, we have to be at least compliant with the state minimums for cannabis, so I think it's a matter of, let's compare the two, and if there's anything that the alcohol covers that isn't covered in the cannabis, I think we should mirror it to be consistent. And then the only difference being it has to be 500 feet, not 300 feet, and so we're compliant with state law.
But if the state, it sounds like the state is only schools and church-type things, places of worship.
This is our city.
Oh, that's ours, city liquor.
Yeah, so we need to make sure that's consistent with the state.
Yeah, and then we need to, wouldn't we want to make sure that it, even if it's more restrictive than the state or our existing alcohol, that it includes parks and public places of recreation?
It has to include four of them that are designated drug-free zones, anyway. It'll have to include those.
That's 1,000 feet.
So 1,000 feet, no, I haven't written that. It's Nolton Park, the Harbor Park, De Meyer Field, and the Moore School, the Moore Community Center, whatever it is now. So.
And municipal building?
Municipal building? I'm not sure if that's all I know. It is? Oh, okay.
Well, I think we can figure it out.
Yeah.
Between Scott and Robert.
I just have one more request, and that is that, based on what I heard you read, council listed churches and so on and so forth, I think that should be houses of worship, period, you know, churches, synagogues, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, we need to update the liquor.
So can't we leave this in the capable hands of Robert and the lawyer guy to kind of hold and massage?
And we, and.
Or we could be here till 12.
Yes. Whatever.
And I'll make sure that we have the alcohol ordinance updated, so that it's houses of worship and not just.
Yeah, and when this comes forward in September for our review and vote, if there's, makes sense, if you can, we can also do that minor amendment to the alcohol ordinance, too, just to make it consistent.
Change that from door to property line?
Yeah, I think so. I think just make it consistent for variety reasons. One, just makes it easier, so you're not like, oh, for alcohol establishments, I have to, you know, do this, but for cannabis, that, just make it all consistent. Anything that's existing already, if it were to become noncompliant, is grandfathered, and so I think that makes sense.
Yeah, that works for me.
To an Article 5?
Yes, I think we're good to move on.
Okay, great. So Article 5 is, you know, you have to have a state license, you have to have a local license. Number 3 is limiting it only to adult-use cannabis stores. That's the only type of adult-use cannabis establishment that was approved by the voters in November. And Article 4 is, this is a process thing. Basically, you can't come to apply for your local license unless you've gone through the initial steps of getting a conditional license with the Office of Cannabis Policy. That's just the way that the process has to work with the state. And it's a good show of faith that they're serious about it, and they've taken that initiative to go get that conditional license before they come to you guys. And then the last one is another one that is, and this is the one I figured we spent most of our time talking about tonight. Robert had said 3 was the magic number, at least for a starting place, so that's in there. And then I included the merit-based criteria, because it was expressed to me that I was, that you guys wanted to have some ability to evaluate the applicants. And then I added the lottery section in, in case there was to tie. So, pardon, just Number 5, it just kind of lays out the process, and obviously references the appendix, which has the merit-based criteria. That's the one I figured everybody would have significant input on, and I just tried to give you, you know, what I've seen from other municipalities and different ordinances as far as just a baseline, and that can be adjusted, obviously. One thing I will say is, if the goal is to limit legal liability, then I'm not sure merit-based criteria is the best way to go, just in general, because there's subjectivity involved in it. But at the end of the day, I think it's doable, depending on, you know, how objective it can be, and how points are awarded, and what merit-based criteria we're improving.
I will just note that that is similar to what we heard during the workshop with the companies that came and attended, that the merit-based, they were seeing a lot of subjectivity, and there's a lot of lawsuits, that's just what these companies were telling us. It doesn't mean that we can't do it, but, and that 3 seemed to be the consistent number that came out of that discussion as well. And I think, you know, if Charlie was sitting in this seat, he would say, I think his druthers would be to, you know, really have the two medical uses right now convert to recreation, and then have a merit-based selection for an additional.
Scott has hand up.
Oh, Charlie has his hand up. Hey, Charlie, I was pretending to be you for a second. You're muted, though.
You're muted, Charlie. Don't tell him.
I said 100% exactly right. Yeah, with the caveat, yeah, Chair Beal, too, has expressed that changing the character, allowing a fair amount, to limiting the numbers, to me, there's, yeah, my druthers, it's like, let's do, let the two medicals switch to rec. If that limits the liability, do we just stop there for the time being? And, you know, but maybe if we do a third, how do you do that third? But, or if we're allowing three, how do we allow all three? So we are just trying to allow recreational and take a slow approach and not try to change the character of Ellsworth, and like, this is an opportunity, I go for two that are medical now, allowing them to switch to retail. I know I've shared with Nancy, just a podcast from Freakonomics, on just a really detailed analysis of like what the landscape is here, and, you know, pretty significant increases in cannabis usage since legalization has happened. And, you know, I really had my druthers, I wrote back time and be like, let's make it a nonprofit or government entity, like a state-run liquor store. Like, we shouldn't be promoting, advertising, because these businesses are trying to get repeat customers, daily customers, and that's not good, you know, for people, so that I could see the universe, and I don't know for the council, what their thoughts are, is just allowing it to medical to convert if it limits the legal liability, and they're already here, and it doesn't change the landscape, and then seeing next steps, like how, you know, if three is really the magic number, and it could create liability for this, Scott, I just, you know, but I don't give up. I get thoughts, and that's kind of where I'm at with this.
Rick?
Yeah, it says maybe limited to three. Elsewhere, you say three, and it seems like there should be consistency, and maybe is pretty flexible, maybe ten, right? But I would be, I would say either pick three or whatever number.
Change it to is limited to three.
There you go. The other thing is that with the merit-based criteria, they do actually, in a sense, give a break probably for existing places because of the one criterion, which is how many, you know, how many years you've been doing this and so forth. In any event, merit-based criteria just kind of pops into that article, though, with no prior introduction, and I would put merit-based criteria, I would give a definition upfront with the other definitions of what merit-based, you don't have to list the criteria, but you have to say what merit-based criteria really means, I think.
Is this based on population? We're going to have three?
So, you know, the council and the Planning Board in previous conversations, I think we're trying to balance, you know, permitting the use with not wanting it to have a negative impact on the community as far as, you know, we don't want cannabis stores all over Ellsworth and changing kind of the character of things. So we pick, I think we've gone back and forth, I think 3 is a number that just we arrived at through discussions. There's still people that, you know, I think everyone has a different idea of it, but I think we've got to pick a number, at least the way we're, the approach we're taking is picking a number and capping it. This isn't set in stone, either. We could allow for three, and it could go really well, we could go, okay, let's, we can maybe allow one or two more, or it could say, whoa, three's too much, let's change it back to one, and then once, if those businesses ever close, then, you know, you can't reopen another one. So while I'm talking, a few thoughts. I have, I think it might be, maybe, to Charlie's point, if the two existing medical businesses wanted to convert to adult use, I think maybe we could draft the ordinance that gives, that says something along the lines of, any existing medical businesses have a window of X days to convert, to submit an application to convert to an adult use, and if they do so, they get first priority, because they've been here for a while, and from what we've been told by police and fire, there haven't been any issues with their operations, and they're experienced. And if they don't, and then that maybe that leaves, there's just, there's one spot left. I don't love the merit-based criteria for the reasons Scott mentioned. I think it is subjective. In my mind, maybe it's just, hey, you know, there's, the other big question here is In my mind, maybe it's just, hey, you know, there's, the other big question here is where are these businesses going, right? And I think, um, having a sense of where these businesses can actually exist beyond just saying they can't be 500 feet from certain things, I think we should, my opinion is we should be very selective and say cannabis businesses, other than the two that are existing, should only be allowed in certain area, and I really think the High Street corridor should be the only area they're allowed. That's my opinion, again, this is a consensus. And then let, you know, and then limit it, and then if any, you know, and then we open up the application period and any business that wants to potentially open a cannabis store can submit an application. If we get ten, there's a lottery and whoever wins, wins. If we get one, congratulations, or three, and there's three spots. That's just my thought. I do think the merit-based criteria is very subjective. I mean, what if they, a business plan, like, can they just write, here's my business plan. I plan to sell cannabis. Do they get a point or do we get to score that, you know, zero to one, you know, like, you know, so to, in my mind, it's if they can satisfy all other criteria in getting the local, getting the state approvals started, and then we can, you know, something along those lines then, rather than picking winners and losers, um, other than if we're only gonna allow three, there's a lottery. But that, those are just my thoughts.
I, we did prepare the map for the, the previous meeting that showed that the High Street corridor really was the ideal location for these retail locations.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I, I think we can also just be explicit in the ordinance and say-
Oh, yeah.
This is only where they're allowed, subject to the 500-foot limitations.
I think in general, the linkages between this and the land use ordinances need to be stronger, as you're really saying, not only with respect to distance, but in terms of, you know, what, in what zones are these users even allowed? Which goes along with restricting to High Street, but it seems like there should be more linkages than there are, and that's just one of them.
I'll reveal my ignorance, but what is the High Street corridor? Is it simply High Street? Does it include Main Street, some of the other fairly large streets?
I was gonna ask, are we including Myrick Street? Same question.
Yeah, I think the, sure, not just High Street, it's a fair question. Again, this is just my one opinion of seven counselors and the whole planning board and planning staff and code, but I think when you think about where retail, you know, primary retail is, it's in the infrastructure for it and existing, you know, retail space, High Street up to Myrick, back around, maybe up one a little bit towards, up to the Home Depot or whatever, like that.
I, I would include the entire commercial core area, which is basically what you're describing.
Yeah, and there you go, maybe it's just the commercial corridor.
I don't see how you could eliminate Main Street, given you have the description, Patrick, if you were after-
Well, I think Main Street's different, in my personal opinion, is we don't want a bunch of cannabis stores on Main Street. I think the Main Street is, there already, there's one, and if they, you know, maybe they, you know, do we need three, you know, all three here? I have real, I just don't think that, again, I think that goes to the, what's the character of Ellsworth, what's, you know, and, but that's just my-
I, I don't disagree, but I would also say that sounds rather arbitrary.
Like, I also think that the, the mandatory setbacks, if we included the places of worship, it's gonna start excluding a lot of Main Street. We have a lot of churches right in downtown.
But you have an existing, an existing-
We do have one existing that's-
I mean, that, that just muddies the water, right?
It does, unfortunately, but-
Well, again, that goes to the grandfathered use concept, right? Like, if they want to maintain their, their grandfathered as a medical business, nor what they, otherwise, as of 2019, that business never could have opened. They had opened previous to the state rule being changed. So again, it's a, it's a conversation for all us to have. I just don't think, I don't know if it's arbit, I think it's not arbitrary events in that we're just, we're actually having this discussion and saying, hey, where do we want this to go? And if we all come to a consensus that we want to go here for these reasons, I think that's fair, and then, but that business is existing and if they want to continue to exist as a medical, they can, and if they, and maybe we give them a chance to convert to adult use. Yeah, but then again, it's just my personal opinion, I don't want to see numerous cannabis stores on Main Street, I think. That limits Main Street.
Chris Law, I agree with you. If I own, own a property already on Main, on Main Street and I want to open a cannabis shop, then what?
Too bad.
Sounds arbitrary to me.
It does.
Too bad because, no, it's not arbitrary.
I mean, I think, Charlie brought this up last meeting and I disagreed with it, and I'll still disagree with it, about the, the idea of giving the current medical marijuana license holders a recreational, just because they're already hold medical marijuana. Whatever the competition is to get a recreational license, they should do it. I, I don't feel it's right to, to give somebody a license, the recreational license just because they hold a, a medical on it. And I think, is the Main Street lady here?
No.
Because I think she said if she got a license, she would drop the medical and just go to recreational. I think Charlie said they would have another facility. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I thought Charlie would want to keep their medical and also have a recreational.
In the same spot?
I don't, I don't think you can.
Yeah, as long as you had separate entrances and they were technically separate, they could be side by side. And also, I, I spoke to the lady that owns the Main Street facility. She had, had interest in making, because she owns the whole building, making the second floor adult use and keeping the first floor as medical. They have separate entrances, so she could-
So it's additional.
I'd like to support Mr. DeLeo's comments that let's not put too much government control in this, just to hand out two winning tickets because you're already here. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Whatever the process is to apply, everybody needs to apply.
And if it's pretty much, I think Patrick was more, didn't like the, the scoring. And I kind, I kind of agree with that because it, it, you can't get many points, so it seemed like, like there could be a lot of ties. So if there's half a dozen, you just throw the names in a hat and pick out the winners. And that way, you probably won't have any appeals, one thing. I think any kind of, you know, merit-based, objective criteria selection process, you're gonna have appeal from a loser.
To your point, if in their application, they meet the requirements in terms of distance and whatever else we have, then that should be, that's the merit, period, you know? You, you fit within the boundaries that have been established. If one of them is, you know, more on Main Street, you fit within that. If you're on Main Street, you're out. Just, you want to be very simple in that regard. The basic criteria that we establish should be, and I'm putting this in quotes, the merit that people might have to meet.
Some, I don't know how we're doing this, but if you can put me in the lineup to speak.
Oh, well, I don't know if, I don't, sure, you're, you always get first in the lineup.
I appreciate that, I'm sorry with Rick. I got here as quick as I could, apologize for showing up late, but work. Refresh my memory on the license for the facility on Main Street, that there was a change to it, I think at the last council meeting, that they were, the way that the license was, was written, are they already recreational as the way I recall it? What changed with that?
It, it was, I, I don't, it was something with, with the clerk's department. I'm, it wasn't anything to do with me specifically, but as I recall, it was, uh, something with how the state required them to license.
Right.
We needed to-
So I wanted to be clear on what had, what changed with their license. Sarah, Sarah seems to be on it, so we'll, we'll see.
That's hope.
There, but they're, they're still a, a medical facility, they're not recreational now.
Okay, there was something about their license, I want to be sure I understand as we're having the conversation.
Did it go from caregiver retail store to dispensary, registered dispensary?
They can't.
Those are two different medical facilities.
I don't think they'd be legally allowed, they wouldn't be allowed to.
You would have had to opt-in for the-
Yeah, the caregiver retail, they're, they are grandfathered because they, they were, they got the approvals from the city to operate the business before the law changed in 2019.
Before, yeah, October, October 2018.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so they, they can continue under that to operate as, as, I don't think they could change their license legally.
Something happened, there was, and I don't remember the details of it, just to clarify.
Yeah, I think they just, you know, the, the state required them to kind of clear up their medical license with the city. That was, to your point, Patrick, it was in sort of a gray area originally, and with the city issue, they just needed clarity that, um, you know, their grandfathered to the medical and it's, you know, that, that the state basically required them to change their license.
Yeah, that, I know, I know what it is now, now here in this conversation. It's, the state started to implement an actual local authorization form as part of the renewal that they had to fill out, that you guys have to fill out and send to the state. That, that's what changed, because before they were just accepting a letter or, or something along those lines, it said, yes, they had approval.
Okay, thank you. So that was like step one to understand that. A question about whether or not we grandfather existing ones, my sense for clarification is that would be at the same location. So if the, the Main Street facility, if we did move forward with grandfathering, it would be at that location, not an additional one on top of that one. When you're talking about grandfathering, is that what we all mean? The, the one business at the same location? If they moved, it's not grandfathered?
That's-
That's generally what grandfathering means, right?
I know, I know, we, with using this specific example of the Main Street store, they, she currently operates both floors as one business. So what she was saying is she could, because they, there are technically separate entrances, she could operate the second floor as adult use and then keep the first floor as medical to allow people that may have a medical need to enter on the first floor, not to climb stairs.
If, if they have different ownership, because the state makes you do that, which is a whole nother-
So they would be separate enterprises. So they'd be separate enterprises and one would not be grandfathered, just one would be, if we go to grandfather.
So, yeah, then probably we just with our 500-foot setbacks, if they don't have a, if they're not grandfathered, they probably can't exist on Main Street.
And if we're only allowing one on Main Street, you couldn't have two enterprises. I'm playing with what we're talking about now for-
Well, if we were gonna allow one recreational, if you still have the medical-
Okay, in addition to the medical, got it, thank you.
Yes, the medical would be grandfathered, but probably if we, if we were gonna just use the, use the setbacks, probably that precludes anybody from being on Main Street, regardless.
So the last point I want to raise at this point in the conversation is when we're looking at the merit-based criteria and the point system, I understand the concerns. However, number three and four, I would argue ought to be thresholds. You have to show financial stability, you have to have taken cannabis education classes in order to be considered. And I, I made the same note about what, what do you mean that they have to submit a detailed business plan, who's gonna decide if it's credible or not? So that would fall under the financial stability, I think. And then I don't know whether number five is the cannabis industry or related business expertise. I, I don't know how we would evaluate that, I don't know if that should be, they are same with veteran, I don't know, but certainly three and four, cannabis education and financial stability, I think should be thresholds to apply.
So rather than scoring, it's just yes or no? Yeah. I like that, I think that is a way of, you know, vetting the applicants without us picking winners and losers.
Right, we want, we want, we want it to be a stable business that comes into town and one that's prepared to take on this unique business. Thank you, that is all I had at this point.
If you, if you don't like the merit-based counting, scoring thing, and let's say on day one, you say, okay, we're gonna have some, some weed shops here and get your proposals in now, and you get five that come in and you really only want three, regardless of whose they are or whatever, how do you winnow it down then? You just randomly, just a lottery?
Lottery, yeah.
So they have to, in essence, they would have to show that they're viable somehow?
Yeah.
And then they get to go into the lottery.
So I think the way, you know, as this is drafted, and obviously we can revise it, but to be viable, one, they have to say first they went through the, the initial state process.
Right.
Right? So that separates some wheat from the chaff, right there. And then they have to show, satisfy all other perform, all other standards in this ordinance as far as location limitations, but also in the application, right? They have to satisfy everything there, and then if we added, you know, these requirements for showing financial stability and cannabis education, right? So, you know, as long as, if, basically, anyone that can make it through the initial screening gets into the pool, again-
So they check all those boxes?
They can check all the boxes, they make it into the lottery. And then, you know, and if there are more than, there's spots open, then you just have the lottery.
And would they have a certain, assuming that they won the lottery, would they have so, so much time to actually bring this to fruition?
I think we could-
Otherwise, you-
You lose your spot and the next person in the lottery that was drawn would have the, right or something. Again, this is all, this isn't in here, right? We're just talking about-
Right.
Yeah, but I think something along those lines, and I know other municipalities have done that.
With lottery.
With a lottery, yeah.
Sorry, just I, I've already bailed out of a family function for a little while, I gotta get back to it, but I do think this is extremely important. To me, there's just like a general sense of like, let's go slow. You know, we've got ears on this. To me, I know Chair Beal's email, just like, forty-five percent of the people didn't vote for this, that's forty-five percent, they don't want any pot stores here. So to me, if you're doing a lottery and it's three, that's three potential and it just happens to be that none of the medicals convert. Now you have five pot stores in Ellsworth, three, and three of which like could be on High Street or the corridor and it's Pot City, four million people coming through here. So if you're not gonna let the medicals just convert over and kind of keep our landscape, maybe I'd like, I would say do one lottery, and maybe it could be the medicals, maybe it couldn't, or two. And then design standards, if you can't do a merit-based system, like, you know, we've all been through those cities and towns, where it's, you know, it's like the, the advertising, the look, the feel, like, could it just be the investment in the property is the scoring metric and it's super easy? You know, the winner is who wants to invest the most money? And is that more legally defensible? To me, my, my bigger concern is just, you know, is just going, going slow, seeing how this goes, um, and, you know, and, and not putting them through a situation where we could have three new pot stores on High Street, all right next to each other if it's just a lottery, and, you know, and fundamentally changes the character of the downtown in ways that, you know, you know, it doesn't represent the best Ellsworth, that's, that's my biggest concern.
Thanks, Charlie. I think those are all fair points and I think, I, I, I agree with them in principle and it's just a matter of figuring out what that looks like and, you know, and I, I also see Steve's point, right? You know, rather than picking winners and losers, there's the free market, you know, argument that, you know, they can satisfy these, so it's a balance. So I don't know, I think, but Charlie did raise two things. I think what's not in this draft are performance standards and that's a way to further, to, you know, to include provisions that ensure some, yeah, like the facade of the building and the look, but also, um, do we want to, you know, I know the state has minimum standards for some of these things, but do we want to incorporate further? You know, I, I agree, I don't, I'd, I'd like to see, you know, you drive around Main and you see just the gamut of cannabis stores, right? Some of them you can't even really tell it's a cannabis store because it, you know, looks kind of fancy and it's got some trendy name, it might be like a bistro, and you're like, oh, that's a cannabis store. Then other ones, it's like, Bob's Weed Shop, and you know, there's like fireworks going off and, um, so I think we want the former, not the latter, in my opinion. But I think having design standards, performance standards, in addition, again, I think we really want to avoid the merit-based criteria, just because I think it does opens up to liability.
So are you suggesting design standards and performance standards as part of the application checklist before even getting into lottery?
Have they satisfied these standards? And those standards being, the building is, you know, signs are not, they have a plan.
Plan.
You know, the thing is, these folks are gonna invest money and they may not get it, right? Especially if it's a lottery, so, but that also, to Charlie's point, may separate some kind of, hey, this is my first time, I'm just kind of writing in- But that also, to Charlie's point, may separate some kind of, hey, this is my first time, I'm just kind of writing in a napkin, versus, hey, I'm a, you know, going concern, I have multiple, I've done this before, I know what this takes. So, that may be a way of further narrowing down and increasing the quality of applicants we receive. If the, if the gauntlet they have to go through to get to the lottery is, you know, demanding enough. Again, I'm just thinking out loud.
When, when you're, when you're thinking out loud there, and say, performance standards, what, give me a couple of examples of.
Signage, so you gotta have, your signage can't be, you know, again.
Is that design or is it performance?
We can call them design and performance standards. You have to perform by installing a nice sign. Performance would be odor control.
Okay.
Um, and.
And the state has some guidelines on that, right?
It does, and I think, one, having, and if we have those, I know, I know it might be somewhat redundant, but I'd like to, it's been a while since I've gone through in detail the state minimums here. Again, I think if we're able to, you know, do we want just that? Are we good with just the minimums, or do we want to?
Well, certainly, it would seem that the performance standards, as you got one there. You know, if you have those that, you know, and if the state has a whole list, then that's where you start, right? Weeding those out, or, you know, making them more stringent or less stringent, or whatever you want to do to them.
It can't be less stringent, it's got to be more stringent.
For, for performance standards, probably.
Definitely.
Definitely?
Yeah.
What about design standards? I don't think so.
It, it can't be, if there are state design standards, it can't be any less stringent. I don't even know if there, I think there are limitations on like signage and things of that nature.
Like no billboards and, or something?
Well, you can't have any sort of cartoons.
Yeah, it can't appeal to children.
Children, yeah.
Oh, right, okay, okay, yeah.
There's a member of the audience, if you could come up to the microphone.
Yeah.
So, so those on TV lang can hear, and if you could say your name into the microphone.
So, just like this, huh? Am I too bad? My name is Bonnie Devino, and I own Royal Leaf Apothecary in Prescott Isle. And I'm sitting here, listening to everything. All of your ideas are, are wonderful. There are a couple of points that I would like to make, one of which, when you open up the option, which I think you should do, to have the existing stores, which are currently medical, opt in for, to be recreational, where does it go from there? Let's say, for example, that they both choose just to go into adult use, AU, recreational. You have constituents here, you have people, I'm on the opposite side, you know, now defending the opposite side, but you have customers that are already used to buying medical products. So, you know, someone should be continuing to address those needs. Now, I can say definitely that being, wearing the hat of somebody in adult use, that we can address the medical needs, but the perception of your people is going to be different, and to be able to convert them is going to be a gradual. Trust me, we have, I believe, five medical stores still thriving up in Prescott Isle, and there are only two adult use. And where we're growing in the sales, Prescott Isle's not growing that much. So, where we're actually growing is slowly pulling from the medical. So, anyway, back to what I'm saying, I think when you offer this, which you have a right to do, I think that you have to also determine where you want to go with that. Now, again, the woman who currently is here on Main Street, because she has a vision of having two different businesses operate under the same building, or in the, within the same building, that doesn't mean, even if she gets the approval from the city here, that she's going to get OCPs. And I can tell you, operating the medical and operating adult use are very, very different. Everything about them is different, and so there's going to also be a learning curve. You just, I mean, I did, I, we jumped in. We didn't have, I, I've had the medical background, but I didn't have a medical store. And I mean, I just jumped in, and I don't know if it was more challenging doing that, or converting from the medical to the AU. But so, anyway, I do think that you should think about where you want to go ultimately, what you want your town to have. I think you should have a medical store, and if you, and then, do you want, at these licenses, do you want four, potentially four of those licenses? When you've said three, you wanted three cannabis businesses, and I know we're talking AU, but maybe you have a vision of not saturating the market. Already, you've got four, before you bring anybody else in. I don't know if everybody's following me, but I mean, if they decide, if they want to keep up, they, they want to keep the medical, and they want to go with adult use. So, then they've got two stores here, two stores here, and I don't know that that's going to serve, serve you well. I think you might want to have some other choices. But anyway, I just, I wanted to mention that. And other than that, I did want to say too, that there, there's a big difference among stores. You know, I mean, some, as you know, visually, you can go to some stores that you really, they're not attractive, and then you can go to some very upscale ones. Beyond that, and I don't know how many of you know this, when you get a retail license, your retail stores are different in that some of these stores are owned by people that are vertically integrated businesses. And so, and, and I would say the majority of them are. So, what I mean by that is, as you're all aware, the state of Maine gives four cannabis, four types of cannabis licensing. So, you've got the cultivation, you have manufacturing, and you have retail. And then, we also have a small segment of testing. So, those are. So, I buy product from a lot of the people who have stores, but I buy the product because they also are cultivators and/or manufacturers, and I know them well. Now, what I'm saying, when you're looking at your criterion, the, the criteria, one of the criterion might be to explore, you know, the background of that store. For example, if I were vertically integrated, and like I said, many stores are, the bulk of what I have in my store is going to be my product. You know, it's going to be, I, I'm at least going to give priority. And, and to be very honest and fair, the people whom I deal with, they're very professional, and they also have other choices, not just their own products. However, they are going to have their own products, and that is going to be different from stores like mine, where I only wanted to be in retail. You know, I never applied for any other kind of a license, and there are other people like me out there that are specifically in retail. So, what does that mean? I, I contacted someone in the store, and we've got all kinds of fancy software, and I'm amazed at the kinds of products. I asked, you know, I had no idea, I mean, I know how much money is in the store and product, but I didn't know the varieties. We have roughly three hundred different choices of products. We have iced teas, we have three kinds of latte. I haven't even, I haven't even drunk three types of latte in my life. You know, three types of latte, we've got iced tea, that's a seasonal thing. That'll end up being, you know, cider and stuff like that in the fall. But it's amazing, the breadth, you know, I think thirty-seven different types of gummies. And, and now, you know, and these things are constantly evolving. I was mentioning some, to someone before, yesterday, that, you know, we bought potato chips from one of our manufacturers. There's a wealth and a variety. So, I think you should also be looking at what they're, what the stores are going to bring in terms of products to the location. All of the products to be sold, and your checklist, that's like, to me, it's like a, the lowest bar, because to get a license to operate a retail store with Augusta, you have to meet all those bars. You have to be financially solvent. I mean, you guys can, you know, if a million dollars isn't enough, and you want three million or whatever, you can do that. But my point is, that's already, all of those rungs of the ladder are going to be achieved when the people come to you. Otherwise, they're not going to have a license, and they have to maintain that license on an annual basis with you, just like they will with OCP. So, I think it's more a matter, again, of what, what those stores are going to bring to your customers. You know, are they going to just be pretty? Are they going to have a lot of products that the people need? Are they going to be financially lucrative enough, I don't know how you delicately do this, but so that you can always have the kinds of products that they need, you know? And when you do have a slice of the pie, you can cut it to so many pieces. And what you see in Bangor, I, I live in Bangor, and I had, I would have had the license to have the second store in Bangor. And after speaking with the people in Bangor, I, I assumed it was going to be over satur, overly saturated. And it's not really good for anybody. It's true, people have choices, but those choices become more limited when the people operating the businesses have financial crunch, you know? So, these are just a lot of different things to look at, and I wouldn't mind spending if anybody, you know, if anybody wanted to meet with me individually or as a group, just to get, maybe if you've got other questions that aren't being answered. But I guess I've said, does anybody have any question for me?
So, I, I had two questions noted, and you've hit on both of them. So, I'd ask your opinion and then turn to others as well. Are the definition of adult use cannabis store doesn't say the word retail, and you use the word retail a couple of times?
Well, I'm talking now with respect to my AU or adult use license. That's the retail segment, as opposed to a manufacturing. Like, I could have also applied, and it still could, for other licenses. But so, when I'm talking about retail, obviously, it's retail also for the medical stores.
So, my point is, from what, again, looking at this for the first time tonight, adult use cannabis store, and I went through the other definitions, I don't see the word retail. I don't know if it needs to be there. Is there, is it wholesale, like someone could buy?
It's, so it relates back to the state statutes definition, so it's all in there. So, to me, what that retail is, is the storefront. There's cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and retail. So, the, but that's really the store.
And retail as opposed to when you mentioned wholesale?
Right.
Like, I have, that's the other thing, how many wholesale partners? I would ask these kinds of questions to the applicant, you know? Because, you know, for example, we have, we, if you go to our store, this was two days ago, I don't know about today. Two days ago, we had a product, all that product I mentioned was just thirteen wholesale partners. However, we buy from another sixteen. So, again, it, knowing that, I think, is important, you know, when, knowing how many people and what kinds of products they have in their store that they're pushing. But wholesale, again, these wholesale partners, I call them wholesale because they are, they're the middle person. Well, that's not really true. They either cultivate, and I buy to put in my retail.
Right.
Or they manufacture, and I buy to put in my retail. Or they do both.
So, within all of that, I'm hearing that we don't need to have the word retail in here between what the different licenses are and what the state is. The, the second question, I'd, I'd be curious, your experience in Prescott Isle. When we had a workshop earlier, we talked about, is it important that the ownership be different for each, so that there isn't a monopoly? So, you have.
The ownership be different, are you referring to?
For the stores, for the, for the adult use stores. How many stores are there in Prescott Isle?
So, there are two adult use in Prescott Isle, and the population of Prescott Isle is almost identical to here.
Okay, but, and then how many medical use?
I believe there are five.
So, how many owners own all of those facilities?
Some of them are, that's the other thing I would get to. It depends on what your interest is. I'm the sole owner of ours. The other one, there was a husband and wife team, and I think he has just sold to someone from Connecticut, but I'm not positive. There are some of these, like, when I look at the vertically integrated one, they might be started by Maine people, but now they have other partners as they expand and grow, you know? I don't know if I'm answering your question, you may have more than one owner in each, each business.
But my question, I guess, is do we care? It seems like it has an impact on what we're creating if it's a lottery system, and more than, you know, and one entity ends up owning more than we don't have.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good point, Nancy, and we can have a.
And it gets weird with partnerships and LLCs, and I don't know how, I think we have attorneys here to be able to sort through that.
I think we could have a limitation on.
Then you have a situation like what happened in Kittery, where you, where you had some companies that, that sent in, you know, a hundred or fifty applications just with different LLCs that they had set up. And there were challenges that happened there, so I think you would want to have something that limits the different, you know, a different ownership within that lottery system.
Okay. I haven't thought of that. That's a way to stack the deck and buy all the lottery tickets.
Yeah, and I think in that, to that point, we can limit, we can say, hey, you got to disclose who the owners are, and there can't be, it can, you know, you can't have similar ownership on, in either, in any one company to start.
And, and the value of that, my sense is still teasing this out, is, is again, to, to have.
Competition.
Competition.
Yeah.
And because that makes things better versus.
Yeah, someone having a monopoly.
All of our careful thought on trying to create this market.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to just add one little thing to that without incriminating myself. What I've noticed also is that when you go into a partnership, I don't care if it's a minor owner or whatever, that oftentimes prevents you from doing what you would normally do, which would be to the betterment of your company. In other words, you could be very, very successful with your business, and now that you have somebody else who has, you know, invested financially, and they're saying, well, look, we're gonna, this is a fact, you know, I'm thinking of something. So, you know, we're going to take a different approach. We're going to do this, and I've got fifty-five percent, and so, this is what's going to be done. And that could be detrimental, because the person that created that business and worked well with that business and knows that business and the, the people is now going in a direction that they normally wouldn't go in. So, it's complicated. Good luck.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
I'll go over there. I guess I'm de facto running the meeting. I want, you know, I've talked a lot, a few other folks have had a fair amount to say. I'd like to, I think it's good to hear from any of the planning board members that have any thoughts on what we've discussed so far, and then any other council members, and then our deputy city manager and legal counsel. And I think our plan is to be done by eight, so I think we should stay on schedule for that.
Yeah, I think, like, like Scott said, this was really the bulk of, a lot of the other stuff is kind of just, you know, language that has to be in our ordinances and things like that, but it is really the bulk was this section, so it's got to be discussed.
The, the merit aspect, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, planning board members, we will start with Mark and work our way to Vince.
Well, I was concerned, like, usage is, so, couldn't they have like a superstore? Unless we limit the size of the store is going to be? You know, I mean, you could have a Home Depot, if you're gonna have like a store, rather than a nice little mom and pop store. You want, you, you don't, you don't, you don't want to be a superstore.
Yeah.
You want to keep our little pristine.
That could be part of the design and performance standards, if that's the way you guys choose to go.
Well, I think we should, well, we should go on it. We want to have a size in the middle on the premises. That's my thought.
I think that's a good point, Mark. Matthew? Robert? Lisa?
My ideas to add in for some of the performance and design features would be the hours of operation. We would want to know that. Their ability, like you said, to curtail odor, noise, and loitering. And have that established that that's not to be permitted. Signage, not only that the signs be pleasing aesthetically, but not include cannabis in the signage so that it's more, you know, it doesn't hit you in the face with a big cannabis leaf. And that the signs are visible and, you know, relate the business if you can read it, but not if you're just driving by. And also that the window view, when you appear at a shop, that you can't see in as to what's going on, that the-
Opaque windows.
Yeah, and, and that their signage on the exterior of the building is, is, you know, makes it look like a nice justifiable business with, that doesn't shout out, oh, what's inside? Let me gawk inside for children. I also think that, that inside of the store, that some of the interior things should be that all of the rules and regulations about not loitering, not creating noise, not creating odors outside of the building, and not creating a public nuisance should be posted so that as they leave the business, they understand our rules because they're not going to read our ordinances. So whatever our, our rules are, whatever the state rules are, a lot of people are from out of state. They come in, they're going to go to the cannabis store, they're not going to know that there are rules that you cannot, you know, smoke and drive, you cannot sit in a parking lot in a public place and smoke. And that should be presented very visibly within the structure before they leave the facility. And then the security features for the business to show that their, their security is sufficient enough, 24/7 monitored security, so that our police force isn't constantly going there for, you know, little issues, that they have their own, and that they have contact 24/7, multiple sources so that we always have access to someone to get a hold of for the business. I mean, it could be, you know, petty theft or it could be somebody trying to break into their storage lockers. Let's make sure that their security features are the best they can be and have them propose that in their plan. Those are some of my ideas.
And I would just note that in a quick review of the requirements at the state level, a lot of those features are, so just to be able to get in the door here, you'd have to meet a lot of those standards.
Right, but we want to make sure that whatever that is, since I don't know what they are, whether or not they satisfy us, like the square footage is a great idea too.
Yeah, and I think one thing here is, we don't want to make the ordinance any more complicated or long than necessary. And if we are incorporating in these requirements from the state, which they are de facto because they only can get the state license. If that's the case, wouldn't we come back to review this? Having a printout or a copy of the state regs so we can compare that to it? Like satisfy all state regs and we go, oh, yeah, we've got posting the rules and sign limitation. If that's all in there, great. And then if, and then we could be like, okay, and we want, you know, no neon sign, you know, whatever we want to pick. So I think those-
I've, I've tried to leave as many of those duplicative things that I know that the state requires out of the ordinance to a certain extent so that it isn't long and complicated and repetitive. But there are a few things, obviously, that were just mentioned that, that you may want to add as far as some of those standards go.
We will make sure for the next meeting that it's just really clear side by side in some sort of presentation format. And would it also be helpful to have like a sample or draft application to see what that would look like? To see what we would be requiring?
Yeah.
See what the rules and regulations are for our-
Yeah, and we'll just, we can draft that up and work on that for the next meeting as well.
And will we have a map that'll show us where the limitations are based on?
We have that, yes. I have that and we can update it for the thousand foot setbacks for the drug free areas. And, but yeah, that was, yeah, I had, had that available off on the screen for the last meetings. We didn't have anybody zooming in or teamsing in.
I think a lot of the points that Lisa brought up that may be mirrored in the state statute that Sarah talked about or should be incorporated into the ordinance because the state has a tendency to change their rules and regulations. And so if they change a, a rule that concerns a store, then all of a sudden they say, you know, just to be foolish that, okay, you can have a 500 square foot neon sign. So I think whatever is in the state regulations should be incorporated into our ordinance. Just so if they do change it, then it's still in our ordinance. Instead of just relying on what the state says. And then the other biggest thing, I guess, is, is decide, you know, are we gonna go with a merit-based criteria or pick out of the hat? If it's merit-based, you know, I would suggest looking at other towns that have this, have a merit base, see what they've done. Somebody who has succeeded maybe in a court battle or has no, had no fights over it. So I guess the big thing is, okay, is it going to be merit-based?
Thanks, Joe. Great.
Not much new really, that they kind of covered it. But, you know, I went into this thinking, oh, well, the merit-based thing is kind of a beta complete of some sort. But I'm, at the same time, I had a lot of questions about, you know, gee, this seems very, you know, qualitative or you can really work the numbers and what does this really mean? Is one here the same as a one there, all that kind of stuff? And so I kind of like the idea that you're going away from the merit-based thing. And I like the idea that, you know, you still have to address all these things in your proposal. So I think it's important to at least have on the side, you know, an idea of how this is going to flow and what a proposal is going to look like and so forth. So I, I'm, you know, shifted away from the merit-based thing because I don't think it's real operational. And I think, the other thing that I hadn't really thought about was the fact that if we had three adult use things and, and, you know, two more that are, you know, medical, I mean, that's five all of a sudden. And, I mean, there may be other ones out there that I don't even know about. But I think that we need to resolve that somehow as to how we're going to count these things and so forth. Because I can imagine one of the existing medical people saying, oh yeah, we, we want to switch or we're going to put in proposal and then not get chosen and say, well, then we'll just keep our, our medical thing going and, you know, whatever. And that certainly presumably would be their right, but I think we need to figure out how we'd like to deal with that. And I think that the linkages between this ordinance and the land use ordinance and whatever that the planning board deals with have to be more, more clear in general.
Thanks, Rick.
And there's 23 little tiny things too that I might could have mentioned to you. Save your ass. Yeah, yeah, well.
Vince, please save us from Rick.
I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think our goal here ought to be to test what I would call basic standards and not put too much emphasis on the details. With all due respect, I don't think signage should be a concern for us now. The town ought to be looking at signage after I've won the bid, if I do win the bid. The second, I'm concerned about equitable in terms of the applicants and being treated equitably. And also in terms of the comparability to other businesses, and I say particularly liquor stores. I can see no reason that these two things, within whatever tweaks there are with state standards, I can't see any reason why these two things should be the same. And if I were applying and I lost on some criteria that, that we were applying to cannabis that didn't apply to liquor stores, I'd be a little concerned about that, more than a little concerned about in terms of. So I think we put ourselves at risk if we aren't equal and dealing with basic standards and if other things can be subject to review if I indeed win the right to have a store in town.
Thanks Vince. If everyone's okay, I'll just keep going with my tagging and start.
I wanted to know how many medical stores is Ellsworth allowed to have?
Technically, we're allowed to have one. I was actually gonna bring this up because Rick mentioned it and others have as well. Technically, we're allowed to have one and there was, the whole history of the Main Street store got in before the rules were changed, before we, before we actually adopted the ordinance and limited it to one. That one is Cure Leaf on, up by Walmart.
So if one of those stores closed, then only-
One could exist.
The other one could exist, okay.
So where my head was going with that was potentially if they both switched to rec and then we would only have one medical store that could now open as well.
Okay, that's good.
A separate store, so we actually may, we instead of having five, if we have the two medical stores and three new ones for adult use, we could potentially only have four stores if we allowed three. Both the current ones switched to rec, one additional rec and one medical. That we actually may go down in numbers instead of having five, we only make it end up with four. But that's hypothetical.
No, good, I, because I am-
Because you currently allow for one dispensary, right?
Yes. And we have, we have, we have, we have the one that's under the ordinance plus the one that's grandfathered. So we have two technically.
Well, one's, one's the caregiver store, right?
Yeah, but-
One caregiver store and the other one's a registered dispensary.
Yes, technically.
But if we go to lottery, the chances of them winning would be maybe?
Yeah, depending on how we-
Yeah, depending on how we did it, yes.
Yeah, I asked that because I am interested in limiting the total number of stores that we have here. So that's, thank you for clarifying that. Is there, oh, I guess I would also be interested in, in putting in some sort of distance between stores.
Yes, we should.
As we talked about High Street, the potential of stores opening right up on top of each other essentially.
Maybe we keep it easy, we can make it 500 feet from each other, just so that everything, everything's 500 feet except for the one, 1,000 foot from drug free that we can't change.
Yeah.
I like that. I think that's good and it goes towards our concerns about, you know, the character of, you know, the, you know, our businesses.
Is 500 feet roughly a block? It's not two blocks? I'm trying to envision 500 feet and I can't.
I, I live in Ellsworth, Maine, I don't know what a block is.
I live on Franklin Street and I walk in, there's different sized blocks.
On that, if, if you say the businesses have to be 500 feet apart and if, let's say the Main Street medical one also gets recreational, which one has put it in the same building, are they not allowed to do that now?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point too.
Well, if, if we were, it sounds like we may not even, we might not allow them to do, we might have to force them to pick one or the other, the way the direction of the conversation's going. But yeah, that would probably preclude them.
It's a good, it's something worthy to discuss and it depends, yeah, it all depends on what we end up doing for the system. But I think it's a good point. And it also might simplify the applicant process because if it's, you know, there's a lottery and, you know, go, you can't, these two can't coexist, right? So we'd have to make sure that whatever gets approved, they're not, they weren't in that buffer, so.
I just wondered too, maybe we should check, because Cure Leaf is one of the original aid dispensaries. And I think I heard someone say, well, if they close, you couldn't have another medical dispenser.
No, you could.
Okay.
Yeah, they changed, there's no longer a cap on state dispensaries either. Yeah, that's all, that's all, that's a vestige of, you know, when it was first growing.
And then I, I liked Mark's idea, I liked the idea of making sure we don't have the same owners flooding our lottery. And I really liked Lisa's points to the design standards, especially the, the windows that are opaque. Main Street right now, you can see all the paraphernalia in the window, taking that away and making that less obvious to the public. I like, that's what I like.
Great. Steve?
Before I rant a little bit, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak that hasn't spoken?
I have a question.
Could you come up, could you come up to the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. I was just wondering-
Can you say your name for the record?
Sure, Natasha Johnson. I was just wondering if you guys were taking this opportunity to also combine intoxicating THC or intoxicating hemp-derived THC products into this ordinance?
Is it to regulate them including in this? Yeah, I mean, we're not, I don't believe that's in the discussion right now.
Not, no, that was something I was going to bring up at the end is if you, if you would like us to also work on adding that to the regulation or, because it's not regulated by anything really, as far as the quality control, if you would like us to see about getting rid of it altogether, outlawing it.
Could you explain what that is, Lisa?
Start with what is it, yeah.
Well, I have to say that Natasha educated me on it, so would you like to explain what it is?
I didn't bring any of my notes.
Or, or her handouts, which we got to have at the League of Town meeting, so it's very informative.
Intoxicating hemp-derived products are something that's ingested that may or may not have an intoxicating effect on you and is essentially a synthetic enhanced version of naturally occurring different cabin compounds that are in hemp, but by human intervention mimic the THC naturally found in the marijuana side. So you're talking about the same cannabis plant. So intoxicating hemp-derived products were essentially left out of the cannabis policy for the state of Maine and are also not necessarily the intention of the 2018 Farm Bill that was passed as well. So they exist in some gray area that federally has been in the news as of lately while they're trying to figure out how to, what to do as well as with the state. There is some proposed regulation for 2026 for the state of Maine as well that Office of Cannabis Policy, I believe, has been working on. It might be LD 1863, maybe. LD 1920 was just passed on June 11th, which was the first regulation that I believe the state of Maine put into place in regards to these products. And that is what required an age of being a minimum of age 21. Prior to that going into effect, which was not June 11th because it was an emergency regulation that was passed without a signature, I think was 10 days late after that. So prior to that, there was no age restriction on these potentially intoxicating products in the state of Maine either. These products are found in almost every municipality that I have been to. And Sarah can talk about her experience in investigating some of those products because we did hand them out for people to look at, at some prior meetings.
Can I ask your affiliation? You gave your name, but clearly there's some background here.
It is personally a topic that I am very interested in. I also wear many hats, so it depends on how you want me to answer.
This is Maine, we all have two or three hats.
I helped with the original task force that the town of Southwest Harbor had for putting together our ordinance for cannabis. I also own a cannabis store and I also have a seat at the select board in the town that I live in as well.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
So yeah, you'll find these products in almost every convenience store in Ellsworth. I did go on a little tour of my own after I learned about this and asked some of the store owners, you know, are you asking for IDs for these products? And they're anything from like looking like chewing gum, candy, very marketed, marketed towards children or younger people, they're in drinks. Some stores say they're their most popular item, they fly off the shelf, a lot of them told me. So, yeah, it was a good educating experience.
They're also in our bars.
They are also in our bars.
And restaurants right now in our town.
It just seems like if you're going to regulate THC, which is the point of a cannabis ordinance, then it would seem like a great opportunity that the city of Ellsworth has to also bring this underneath that umbrella.
Do you know of any other municipalities that are regulating the products?
Not yet. Not that I'm aware of yet.
Scott, do you know of any?
I don't know of, no, I don't know of any. And I would just add that it's, it's really just a loophole based on the definition of hemp. So if it's, if you're deriving it from a plant that has below 0.3%- So if it's, i- if you're deriving it from a plant that has below 0.3% THC. You could just have to basically process more of it to get to the same result of what would be regulated under the, under the adult use program.
Can I just say how handy it is to have our attorney nodding his head behind the person speaking like, okay, so we're good, we're good, it works very well.
Yeah.
Correct me if I said anything wrong.
No, no, that's very helpful. Thank you for bringing it to us.
So i- is, is there, would there be, in your opinion, the, the ability to regulate the, the hemp derived stuff as well?
I'd have to look, I'd have to look at that. I don't know off the top of my head of how, I, I'd have to think a little bit about how we would actually do that, if that was something that you wanted to do.
See, I, I think there, I, I'm not sure what, what, what are, are, I.
I'd like to know, I think maybe, I think maybe if Sarah and Scott or, and Robert, you guys could look into more. I'm a little hesitant for us to be the first community in Maine to regulate it, not because I don't think it's important, but I think it's, that's a lot to take on, um.
And you'd have to, I mean, if the state is not regulating that.
Or the feds, yeah.
You would have to guarantee you'd be sued over it.
I think so, yeah.
Objectify why you're doing what you're doing.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think, I understand it's an important issue, but I think, um, for the scope of tonight too, I think we wanna, we only have 25 minutes. I don't think we wanna get too far into it.
I just wanted to say that that proposed legislation for LD 1863 or whatever it is, for 2026 would bring that underneath the umbrella of OCP. I believe into their adult use program.
Great, so they, they, then those products couldn't be sold anywhere other than a cannabis retail store?
I don't know.
Okay, so yeah, to, to that, to me, if there's, the state's still figuring it out, I'm a little hesitant for the city to walk right into that one.
It would, it would not only mean that they can only be sold at, at retail, at, you know, adult use stores, but it would mean it, it went through testing and tracking also. So it was a closing loop system that the state created.
Yeah, which, that, those products are currently not being tested or trapped, correct? That's like the, one of the huge issues with them, yeah.
So we can come back and just have like an update on this issue, not, not muddy this, um, ordinance with it. Um, and maybe we can reach out to the state and see what they know. Cause I did hear a podcast from the, uh, Office of Cannabis Policy, an interview that they did that they talked about this, so, um, I can follow up with that.
That's great.
It just, it seems it's very different if this is something at a convenience store that a kid could pick up versus for sale at a, at a bar or restaurant, there's.
Right, hopefully.
Very different things we're.
And hopefully that issue about a kid picking up has been eliminated with LD 1920, hopefully.
From what OCP said when they were here, uh, virtually last month, until the day before that meeting, there was no age limit on it, and anybody could go buy it. And that was 21 plus at least, 21 plus.
Okay. Anyone else, on Steve's question, anyone else from the public? Steve?
First of all, I like this collaborative effort between the planning board and the council and the citizenry. I, I think it's important, I think we're, I'm getting a lot out of this just from listening to this. This is not the first time we've done it, but it, it's really helpful. Last November, um, since I've been on the council, I have been a, a big fan of letting Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth decide their future. And that turns into, um, referendums. And so this went to referendum in the city of Ellsworth. And, and the ballot said, shall the city of Ellsworth vote to authorize within the municipality, the operation of adult use cannabis stores? Provided they operate in compliance with applicable state and local requirements. Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth said 55 out of 100 people said they wanted that. 45 out of 100 people said they didn't. So I was for putting things to referendum and it come back to fight me because I'm against this subject. However, I'm glad for it. I, I didn't want Ellsworth populated with all of these, um, candy stores of adult use or what have you. But Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth, 55 out of 100, said that they wanted that. So I'm for that, because that's what they want. If that's what they want, that's what we're here to do. I don't think they voted for the government to put its clause in as far as I'm listening to. I think they said they want it. And I think they're asking that we figure out how to do it, which is why we're here tonight. And what I heard, I, I like the, Mr. DeLeo, your point of trying to align things with other products to make it easy. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheels and I don't think we need to overregulate what the citizens voted for either. Under Article Five, Section Five, this, this limit of three. You know, I, if I had my way, there'd be a limit of zero. But Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth said they want it, therefore we're gonna have it. I, a- as much as I don't wanna junk up our town with all these shops, I believe in the free market system. And I think tinkering with the free market system in the long run is very dangerous. I don't like what I'm hearing about the city telling the dispensaries that they can opt in ahead of anybody else or with anybody else. Whatever the system is that we're gonna settle on ought to be good for everybody, not just some. I'm for the free market, let the free market figure all this out. Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth said they wanted it, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth ought to get it. But the free market needs to prevail. We cannot control the free market. It may be better suited to control this free market than others, but it's dangerous in the end. You don't control free markets with government clause. I'm against that. Beyond that, I noticed in the last, let's see. Uh, Article Six, Licensing Authority, Section Two, Dash Three. In this draft, it says, no local license shall be granted by the licensing authority until the police chief, the fire chief, the health inspector. And if applicable, the code enforcement officer. All have made a positive recommendation upon the applicant's ability to comply with the ordinance. Too much control. What happens if there's already a rift going on between the fire chief and some applicant? Shouldn't be there. We ought to have the same rules. You know, I'm forced to support Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth in this, just because I don't like it, doesn't mean I don't support Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth in this. In, in bringing this to Ellsworth. But that little section right there gives too much authority to too few people to control who gets licensed.
I, I agree.
That, that is how we do.
Just gonna ask.
It's how we do liquor in hotels and motels now.
Doesn't make it right.
I didn't, that's, but that's, that's in line.
Too much local control and that needs to get out of there, no matter what you guys come up with. That allows a 30-year beef between two people to prevail.
I do have a.
Let's not hide tomorrow with yesterday.
If you don't mind, Steve, if I could follow up on that point.
Please?
And I hear what you guys are saying and I, you know, again, it's a balance, in my opinion, it's a balance between, um, making sure that they comply with all our regulations and rules. But I do think the way that it's worded, and I don't know if that's how it's worded in our other ordinances, that does allow for some arbitrary, you know, depending the police chief or the fire chief changes next week. And someone comes in and they're like, I don't like any cannabis stores and I'm gonna say no to everything. What, how do we deal with that?
That also does come down, I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but I believe in, in the personnel ordinance, like you, if you, well, if you, i- if, if you doing something like that where you're, you're bringing in personal buys into it.
Well, or the, maybe, yeah, so.
You, you, you'd have to be on a pretty good reason as to why the, the shop isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing, if you're just saying, well, I don't like the way it looks or.
Yeah, no, I, I get that.
Get rid of it.
I think it's, um, but I do worry about any kind of arbitrary, just if someone has the authority to be like, they don't make, so if they make a negat, they say, I'm not gonna recommend this.
So is it?
It may just be the wording, because I think, and Robert, you may, you may be able to speak more to this, but I, I mean, I really think that this is designed to say, um, you know, as long as you've got no certificate of occupancy. Or a conditional use permit to be able to, to operate this type of business.
Get rid of recommendation and just say verify compliance, that they meet all the requirements.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all we do.
Yeah, so then I think we just need to clarify that.
All have made a positive recommendation.
That lady.
That's just not healthy. One further point.
It's a good catch, Steve.
I think that's a need to change, Steve. I think, I think we can just change to the way that it's worded.
I just don't want 30-year beefs being in control of this. One final thing, I've heard many people talk about odor and compliance of odor. Don't worry about it in Ellsworth. Because we don't enforce the odor ordinance, so don't worry about the odor.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Tammy?
Couple of things, um, so I don't think that there should be, like you were describing, like a marijuana leaf on the, on a sign. I also, can we limit the type of wording? Like, I am not for Bob's Wheat Shop, as you had mentioned before, so. So I don't know if we, if there's limitations. I just think it needs to be classy, but. Um, also, how is the lottery gonna be conducted and do we need to define that in the ordinance and who's gonna conduct it and?
Cause I know other municipalities have implemented a lottery system, so I'm sure we could find something, Scott could find something and.
Okay, and the other thing on that licensing, the inspections, making sure they have their security, making sure. The fire ins, they have.
Yeah, we, we do those annual inspections now for the, for the two medical facilities.
So one thing that I didn't see in there is our requirement to make sure taxes, water and sewer is also paid, so when it comes up for relicensing, I think that needs to be.
I, I, I do know that, uh, for the way we do it now with all the different signups is that Sue will not sign it unless they're up to date on all their taxes and everything, so.
Okay, we just need to check to see, that's in our other, um, ordinance requirements.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is or not. I, I know, I know it's how she does it, but we could actually make it explicit.
I feel like it is in there, so.
I've seen that in other ordinances, Tammy, we can add, we can add language to that fact.
Okay. I believe that's all I had.
May I make a comment just about the signage thing? I don't know if there are regulations in the, in the city of Ellsworth for signage now for stores. But I would suggest that if there are regulations, then what we have to tell the cannabis vendors is that their signage has to be, uh, in compliance with, uh, the already existing regulations. And if we don't have them, I, that, those kinds of regulations, then I think we put ourselves at risk. Don't tell me what kind of signing to put up, if you can tell the grocer over there what some kind of sign he or she can put up, don't, don't tell me if I'm running a cannabis shop.
We, we do have a, we have a pretty robust sign ordinance, it's very restrictive.
Okay.
Um, but, and also that I believe the state has limits on what the, the, these locations could put on the signs as far as, you know, no cartoon characters, et cetera.
Yeah, and I think that just goes back to, when we come back to this, if anything's not explicitly in the ordinance, but it's referring, and I've heard the points of, to John, like it could change, but, you know, we gotta balance. Not having too much in the ordinance, but making sure things are clear. But it would be helpful to, you know, and even if you could, you know, I know we can all access it, but if there's a way to just get this in front of us, so. I think a lot of the questions are, the answers are in there, just many of the questions have been raised, um, but I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think for, for the most part, that stuff is just in the general advertising and marketing section, uh, of the state statute. And, and the rules, not, not necessarily specific to signage, but about kind of everything broadly in the industry.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, that, Nancy?
I, uh, two, two points. Conversation we've had about performance standards and design standards, um, and whether or not they're enforceable. Is there somewhere in the ordinance or higher up in our little ordinances, an establishment of like what the purpose of the standards are as a way to make them defensible? If we wanna have, you know, the idea of a maximum square footage. Do we need to include or where do we, um, reference what the purpose of that is? And is that a way that makes the performance standards and the design standards defensible?
Yeah, so, and I, Scott, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna step on your toes, but for, for those type, for any kind of ordinance, you know, it can't be arbitrary and capricious, right?
Those were the words I could not think of, but defensible I remembered was the other one, yeah.
So we just, the, the, you know, but performance standards are something that are in all, like for all land use planning.
So we don't have to tie directly back to the purpose of this standard is.
Yeah, you don't have to have that explicitly, but you also just, you know, I think, and if anyone ever were to challenge it, they could go back to recording and say, well, we picked the 10,000 square feet or whatever number it was, because we didn't want there to, we wanted to. It's part of limiting the total amount of cannabis retail space available or, and that alone would be enough to, defensible.
That's helpful, thank you. It leads to my second question. How do we know what a sustainable number of stores or square footage is? The reference that we're the same size as Prescott, we also are the gateway for 4 million people a year. I'm just curious, it's not like we can compare ourselves with, or what, how do you determine? It's not just on population, what the carrying capacity of Ellsworth is.
Yeah, there's a few more people going through Ellsworth than Prescott in the summer.
Even in the winter. So having been to Prescott Island both seasons, so.
That being said though, um, the stores are competing among each other. So a lot of that has to do, I think, with the total number of cannabis stores, it's not just the population, it's not just influx seasonally. You know, for example, we have seven stores and we are, trust me, we are competing with the medical. It's cheaper, I just, I just got a message from OCP on the way here, um, beginning January, it's another little factor. Beginning January 1st of next year, um, sales tax is going to be increased from 10% on adult use products to 14%. Meanwhile, with the medical, it's 5.5%. So there are a lot of reasons that people purchasing cannabis are going to purchase from medical outlets. So I, I do think that that has to be fact, there's so many variables, you know, there really are.
So even, even with those variables, and I guess turning to people with more experience with this with other municipalities, how do you determine our like comfort level? Cause this is new and we don't wanna overstep is three. But is there a way that communities look at the dynamics of the populations to know what the right? And again, it's not necessarily number of stores, it might be square footage, it's like sales levels, but does anybody look at that in Maine?
Do, is there a database somewhere that shows like how many medical facilities? I think that would be a really great, if we could have that information.
It wouldn't tell us what the right number is, but at least it'd be comparable, which is helpful.
And show what the population is and.
I, I can reach out to OCP and ask if they have that information.
It's on their website.
Is it? Okay.
You can bring it right up.
That's it, thank you.
No, thanks Nancy. Um, well, mindful of time, um, I just had a few kinda thoughts, tried, tried. I think to Nancy's point and to Steve's point, right, you know, there's, one side there's free market, the other side there's, you know, government control. And, um, I think both have valid points. I think what, um, the, ultimately, right, we're trying to figure out what's right for Ellsworth. And to Nancy's point, I don't know what the right number is. Um, but we either pick as many as you want or we pick a number. Um, I, I think we pick a number and then we s- just see what happens, right? And if it turns out that that's perfect and kumbaya, then great. If it turns out, hey, there's way more demand than there is this and, you know, do we wanna add more stores, then we can do that. I mean, this isn't set in stone, it's written, it's in ink and paper. What I've been hearing is, you know, I, and I hear Charlie's points. I, I've come around in listening tonight that I don't thi, I think because there is medical and rec, adult use, while obviously it's the same product. There are different applications and there's different uses and there's different tax rates apparently and all these things. I think maybe rather than, you know, these two stores, they can exist, they can, can keep doing what they want. And we just, we just have a, a number that we, and we're gonna allow for. and we just, we just have a, a number that we, and we're gonna allow for X more. And if these people wanna also open a me-, adult-use store, you know, maybe we allow them to apply, and there can't be any adult-use stores that are owned by the same company, right? So then it's, because then the, the adult-use market is different than the medical market, and they're still competing with other adult-use stores. I think, you know, there's, you know, Prescott Isle, similar-sized town, they're two, they have two adult use, right? Who knows where they came up with that number, or if they did. I still think three is a, a good number in addition to the medicals. And then I think we should just, you know, and if it turns out that's wrong, then we can fix it. So my thought is, you know, I was between two and three when we first started this a long time ago. I still think I'm there, around two or three, plus these are two adult, the medicals. And then we see what happens. I do have, I don't want Ellsworth to become like, you know, the cannabis capital of Down East Maine. Like, I really don't think that's what we want. But we wanna be able to provide, you know, but it's also an industry, it's a business, and it can have, if we do it right, I think it can have positive impact. And again, I hear your point, Steve, and we don't do the same thing to other businesses, right? So, other than commercial zoning, so there are some limitations. But I know Steve probably doesn't care for those either.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Can, can I throw something out just before it leaves my brain? So, I, I don't mean to throw a wrench in, in this entire discussion, but it, it reminded me when you said, when you said that. So, it, it didn't happen exactly like this, but the way it happened in South Portland is they said, "All right, it's zoned for, you know, X dis-, X districts, and come, you know, come and get your licenses." And so, you know, people flooded in. And eventually, they said, "Okay, well, I think we're getting to a point where we have too many." And rather than put a cap on it, what they did is they did a two-thousand straight, two-thousand straight-line foot buffer between any medical caregiver store, registered dispensary, or adult-use store. So, between the zoning and the, the buffer of, of those folks that had already been, that were already there or were in the pipeline, in the application process, it essentially shut, shut the city down.
How many did they have?
But, but you had, there's a lot of logistics obviously involved with trying to figure that out and, and do it in the first instance in this process. But it's just another idea. I know, I know that one has never been legally challenged.
So, just a di-, just a distance.
Didn't open the city up to any sort of liability. So, so it's a very safe way to do it. But again, you're talking about really limiting where things can be, and then maybe at that point, you actually are opening stuff up because the area is so small and the, the places where people could select a business to, or, you know, get a lease or have a, have a, have a building to actually do it. But I just wanted to throw, I just wanted to put that in you guys' mind, just to, just to give you some proof of thought.
Yeah, well, I think that's a good point, and, you know, again, this is, we're all gonna have to vote on, we're gonna have to get the Planning Board to recommend something, then we're all gonna have to vote on it. But hearing everything that's been mentioned, we have the performance standards, I'm trying to capture everything everyone said. I think a buffer of some amount of feet between stores makes sense. And if it's only in the commercial district and we're only allowing three, that actually might, in part, kind of help with, you know, limiting it, because there's only so much retail space that's available. I do think having some limitation on the square footage makes sense, just because again, yeah, to Mark's point, what if the super-duper weed mart, you know, opens up and it's, you know, so I think we wanna limit that to some degree. But, so that's where my brain's at. Commercial district, let's, three, see how it works. Limitations on feet, performance standards, and, yeah, well, I'll stop there. And I, but, and thank you for bringing up the hemp THC issue, I think that's really important. I've seen this stuff in every convenience store, and it shouldn't be. But I don't think that's the city's, that's not our job. I don't think it's what we wanna take on right now, we need, but we can go to our state legislators and say, "This needs to be fixed, and we need to fix this next session."
Can I just say, with that in mind, if the council wanted to take that action at a future meeting, cloture for new bills is September twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. So, we'd have to have a, a quick turnaround. If we wanted to write a letter to our legislators and say, "This issue has come for us, it's a state-level issue." We hope that you'll look into it, something like that.
Yeah, I think, I think
We can also do it with a simple phone call, or assume that they watch each and every one of our meetings.
Maybe we should write a letter.
For, uh, municipal association, Nancy. That, that can be helpful, too.
Yeah, get them to block before
So, just to make sure, I have a couple marching orders for our next meeting, which the process is, is that this was going to go to the Planning Board for the next step in September, and then back to the council. Is everyone still okay with that, with these outstanding items? Always can bring it to the September workshop and give an update.
If we need to, we can bring it to the workshop. We're probably planning on bringing it to the workshop.
Okay, um, that workshop will be the Monday before the Planning Board, so it will probably have to get posted through their process, but it will still be open for discussion, okay? So, we're gonna go forward with the three, not kind of giving a special opt-in for the existing two, medical. We're gonna have an outline of what the lottery will look like, like who's gonna conduct it, where it's gonna be advertised, all of those types of things. A draft application, the state regs versus our proposed local regs, number of establishments, both medical and adult-use permanent municipality in the state. And I, I have all the design standard things and all of that that we'll incorporate. All the things that we've talked about, we'll make sure to incorporate.
Two other, the buffers, trying to sync cannabis and alcohol as best we can.
So, the buffers to sync those and the
Buffers between businesses.
And what, right, exactly, what uses, like the places of worship, and make sure those are consistent.
Yeah, and then I think that exploring whether having, you know, the South Portland approach, I don't know if it's two thousand feet or something, and maybe you guys can play around with the map a little bit, be like, with two thousand feet, does prohibit everything, or is it like, is it a hundred, is it a thousand feet?
Almost half a mile, that would, that
Yeah, so maybe just Maybe you can just mess around a little bit with the, the map, once we're saying, "Here's where we allow it, here's the buffers and everything that has to be buffered." You know, is that even viable, do we even need it? But I think it's a good point, it's something that we should consider, because I, I think ultimately what we end up doing is having, voiding the merit and having a, a robust enough process where it really
Speaks for itself, right?
Speaks for itself, and then we just, and then, you know
Patrick Long, the, the buffer, I think you wanna specify, is that applied on the feet door-to-door or property line to property line?
Mm-hmm. I think we should wanna be consistent with the other buffers, I think we should do that.
We'd have to change, the, from what Tabitha said, the, our, our alcohol ordinance is door-to-door, which is, y- used to be the standard for the state, and now they've gone to property lines for
But we can add that to our list of changes in our ordinance, right? That's happening right now. I mean, I think if we can just say that we're gonna change that in this session.
And ju-, just, I, I can, for anybody who doesn't know where, where our commercial district is, it starts at Cardbrook. So actually, like the Shaw's Plaza and all that is not part of the, technically, part of the commercial district. Starts at Cardbrook, goes to the town line, up, uh, up the hill, past Maverick Street. Goes towards Trenton, it goes down one A to the town line, and that's the commercial district.
Okay.
So it's not that big an area, really.
Yeah, I don't know if we wanna not include like the Shaw's Plaza.
Yeah, so we may have to, with maybe either redo a little rezoning in this all, too, or
Yeah, or just
Have wording, it's just, it starts at, you know
We'll propose some wording, yeah. That doesn't sound like the commercial zone's gonna capture all of something.
Yeah, I just don't wanna, there's a lot of retail space there that could be used.
Do you guys also have a, like a, a table of uses in your, in your, in your use ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, just, just checking.
So, there, there are two things, clarification over what I heard. We had talked about shifting the merit-based to requirements, but then I heard this is required by the state. So, the cannabis education and the financial stability, I didn't hear that in your summary. Do we not need them because we're in the state, but then we say, "But the state requires things now?"
If they're not, if they're not required by the state, they should be required by our ordinance.
Yes.
So, I didn't hear that in what you said.
I'm gonna, right, but in that review of what the state's requiring, we're gonna capture those things.
So, do we want to include this in this municipal ordinance, the cannabis education and financial stability?
The two that you outlined, I thought we did, yes.
If they're not, I think if, if they're already in the state regs, then we can still make it redundant, though, and it can be
Well, I, you know, hearing, hearing John say, if the state changes it, we'd still want it. So it's just, I didn't hear that in what you were saying, but
That, all of those standards that we identified, that would be in the application.
I don't think those things are.
And then the one, the last thing I don't hear, I don't know how we're moving forward with, is the interest in having different ownerships.
I thi-, oh, good point, and I think we should limit
That's gonna be in the application.
Adult use.
That'll be, you'll have to prove that, yep.
Just making sure what I've got from my notes is reflected in what you had said, so.
Sorry, I didn't go through every one of the things, just
It's okay.
For interest of time, I'm sorry.
Those, those ones were better, so.
I'd like to throw one thing out before closing. And when you brought forward the measurement between facilities, if there's anything good about that regulation, it would be that any prospective person could drive around town and decide where they could go. Doesn't have to look up, if, if, once they know that, they don't have to go through ten different regulations. Okay, here's, here's business A. I can only be fifteen hundred feet within business A and business C, and where am I gonna be? There's one good thing I see out of that deal.
My one thing we haven't discussed at all tonight is, is what do you, what does council wanna set as a fee, application fee?
Uh-huh, or maybe it's something that Robert and you guys can try to figure out.
We, we could al-, always set that at the workshop, figure, patch that up there.
Yeah.
A whole lot of
And that wouldn't be difficult to add before the planning board approval.
Yeah.
Referencing the fee schedule in the ordinance, but it's, it's really easy to just drop it right in there if that's where you want it.
Well, I think having the fee schedule separate, because then it allows flexibility in updating it, like we do with our other fees of that nature. But, yeah.
Correct.
But I think we should still have a number that we're thinking of to start. All right.
Well, thank you all.
Great meeting.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Planning Board, thanks, staff, thank you, public.
Thanks, all, yeah, have a great night.